So I'm sure you guys heard some of the discussion we've been having. We are analyzing the electric schedule. This is just the beginning. We're going to do this for all of our 11 lines, but really want to do two things. One, address underutilized equipment. And we also want to look at opportunities in the Federfield ridership. You may have heard there's been a decline in ridership on the electric line in recent years. We're really trying to do something to stay that up. At the same time, we also want to make sure that our service really meets ridership demand. So to look at the current Metro Electric schedule, it's a Monday through Saturday schedule. And really, we're not seeing that demand on weekends as you would on a weekday. So we're trying to make that a little bit more normal, kind of like other lines, and make it a Monday through Friday schedule and then more of a weekend schedule. That's part of simplifying the schedule. Another goal is to make the headways, we call it, what we call frequency, consistent midday. So right now, sometimes you see trains back to back to back, a large gap, trains back to back to back, a large gap. And we're trying to make that a consistent headway or frequency throughout the midday. So what exactly are we proposing? So we are proposing to eliminate the branch shuttle trains in the morning and the late evening. So what is a branch shuttle train? Those are the trains that either go between 93rd Street and 59th Street or 63rd Street or Blue Island, like here, and Kensington. So we find that those trains have extremely low ridership, actually. Sometimes fewer than five people, sometimes actually have counts of zero people on them. So it's literally an empty train. We are making one adjustment, however, for the early morning. We're combining two of those shuttle trains into one full one-seat ride downtown. So we've heard some concerns. It gets in currently in the proposed schedule of 5:57. A lot of people have 6 o'clock starts. We are looking at making that adjustments, and that's why we're here, for specific feedback like that. But again, so two of those shuttle trains, you know, right now require a transfer. We're proposing to make that one-seat ride all the way downtown. That's early morning. On the evening trains, we are proposing to keep one shuttle train at the very end of the night, about 8:11. That's because after that, we do see a large drop off of ridership. We're keeping that one loop train, one shuttle train, I should say, in there as a safety net and also to return the equipment back. So there is one loop train, one shuttle train at the end at 8:11 in the current proposed So this is an example of what I was talking about earlier. I know it's, there's no great way of showing the schedule changes on a presentation. The numbers are by design, you know, club stuff, they're by design small. But you can see here, you have a 200 and a 202 that serve inbound branch. This is what I was talking about earlier. We are proposing to make that 202 into a one-seat ride all the way downtown. Currently, they require a transfer at Kensington. The proposed schedule, it'll take you all the way downtown to 202. And again, as-
The 202 a.m.?
A.m., great. It's, well, it's 202 the train number. They have departed 5:00 a.m. in this proposal. So it's early morning.
But it will still make stops?
Yeah, it'll make old stops, yeah. So right now, it doesn't make old stops go downtown. If you wanted to go downtown early morning, you'd have to transfer at Kensington. And that's the best kind of point. We're trying to combine those two trains and make a one-seat ride, because we find that those branch shuttle trains aren't very popular, because they are, you know, they require a transfer and that's a two-seat ride, and that just tends to drive down ridership. So also want to make the point that this isn't just looking at, you know, the South Chicago branch or the Blue Island branch. This is looking at the Electric District electric line in totality. So we have studied the entire line. There are three portions of the electric line where we are now, the Blue Island line, what we call the main line, which goes between University Park and William Station, and then also the South Chicago branch. So this, you know, this slide may not affect folks here, but it's kind of to show you that we are looking at the line and trying to make changes throughout the entire line. In the morning, there is a large gap for downline riders, and we're proposing to address that by moving equipment earlier. Again, with the goal of being, making our equipment just being used more efficiently. And whenever we have made this change, we are trying to make sure that riders who are affected by that change still have options. So there are some south adjustments in the early morning rush, and that is because we're making changes to accommodate those riders who, you know, if you're moving a train up, well, you rely on that train, other trains will make up the slack. And as I mentioned too, with the, providing us two early morning loop trains, we are looking at other aspects of the line. So the main line, the South Suburban line, we are looking at combining two lighter used trains in the morning peak. So two trains that have a little bit less ridership, and one set of equipment can actually accommodate two different trains. So we're proposing to make that one set of equipment that picks up all those riders in the morning. And this is, again, this is downline. This is in the Flossmore Harbor area. We're proposing to do that in the morning, and we're also proposing to do that in the evenings. So again, we're just combining trains, but we see efficiencies, but we have trains that can accommodate, you know, one train car could accommodate about 140 people. So if there's a train car that, you know, if there's a train set that, or a train, I should say, that only has 200 people on it, has four cars, well, that's not the best use of equipment. We can actually accommodate more riders. That's why we're looking to make some of these combinations. So another goal, kind of what I mentioned earlier, was making the headways more consistent, the midday service more consistent. If you look at the electric line map, there are three branches. And right now, like I mentioned, there's kind of trains back to back, a large gap, trains back to back, a large gap. So whenever we talk about some of this Hyde Park enhanced service, part of that is just basically making the service more consistent. Instead of having, you know, two trains back to back, if you space trains evenly, if you have hourly service on the three branches and you space them evenly, then you make 20-minute service to Hyde Park, because all the trains have to traverse Hyde Park. That's some of the logic behind this. It's not just, you know, throwing service where it's maybe not needed, but some of it just makes it that, you know, we're doing these things consistently and also giving the riders expectations of when they can expect their trains. I will say midday, Blue Island currently serves every two hours, and that's the same frequency in this proposed schedule. So midday weekday service does not really change in terms of the number of trains Blue Island sees. So we are looking at, like I mentioned, some of these trains that don't have a lot of ridership. So there's eight shuttle trains on the South Chicago branch, which is close to the lake east, and eight shuttle trains, I should say, on the Blue Island branch. So we are looking at making those reductions. That is part of the, again, the greater goal, making sure that our equipment is being well utilized and that we're actually servicing where folks are. So this slide is basically meant, and we actually, you know, we have handouts of these, and again, it's hard to show schedule changes, because there's the sheer number of stops and times involved. But the purpose of the slide is really to look at, how was the schedule actually changing for me? So the top row is what the current schedule, schedule as it stands today is. The row right below it is how it'll change. So that means that a 439 departure currently, like I mentioned, we're proposing combining that with a 530 for a 5 o'clock departure. We might move that up a little bit earlier to make that 6 o'clock start feasible. But this is basically how the schedule will change for inbound for Blue Island branch. So this is some of the changes. You can see a lot of the trains actually depart Blue Island the exact same time. Sometimes they're changed about an hour, but really that, this kind of encapsulates the change. The same for outbound as well. So this is what I was mentioning earlier. The last train we're looking at is 8:11. That's departing from Kensington, so that one shuttle train is still in effect.
There you go. Yeah?
Sure.
What was that other one from? Blue Island to?
Yes, this is, these are trains departing Blue Island. So that, so there's a 610 train currently, we're proposing to depart at 6:15.
Okay, and then 6:40?
Correct, yes. There's 6:40 currently and a 6:40 we're proposing as well.
And that's going to save?
Yeah.
But you want us to take out more stops?
Yeah, and that is, well, that's still a train, but yeah, they are proposing to reconfigure some of the stops. They will have stops there.
No, they're not acceptable.
And if there are questions or comments like that, please write them down. We are taking these comments absolutely-
I mean, I seriously, I could write a bus. I mean, they're going to stop every stop too. I don't want to write a bus. Same way, same train.
And that's why we're here. You know, these are the comments we're looking for. So I encourage you, please write them down.
And there's a lot of people on those trains. I don't understand why you wanted to-
Yeah, now, this is, again, this is a proposal. This is looking into scheduling in its entirety. So if you have comments like that, anyone who has comments like that, I encourage you to write them down, because we will, we are reading them seriously.
Well, we're going to apply any of the proposals.
Okay.
Do us a favor, though. Don't write it like that, because we won't be able to really get the information about that, and it won't mean anything. So if it affects you some way, write that down.
Do you want me to come to the meeting? I could explain it. You know, you guys are going to do a board meeting?
What you need to do is write it down, so we look at it and take everybody's comments and see where it's at.
I think too, just in general, I know, let's see if you have any questions till the end, in case I do answer it earlier. But again, we're here to answer questions. We're here, this proposal, we're here to hear you guys, and that's exactly why we're here.
I just want to make sure it's just not set in stone already, that we do have a voice and we're going to listen.
So as, kind of, again, using the equipment efficiently, that's part of the goal of this study, is our current Saturday service. We do have a Monday through Saturday schedule currently on the Electric District, and we're seeing that those passenger loads aren't necessarily seen on Saturdays, just like an express wave and see the same traffic on Saturday as you would on Monday through Friday during rush hour. So there are, you know, there are differences in travel patterns, employment patterns you see on Saturday compared to a weekday. So current Saturday service is more like a kind of weekday schedule, and currently we actually operate more on the electric than any other line. And we're proposing to stay that, that way for the electric line, but this is part of the, the study, is looking at where riders are. And right now, for the Blue Island branch stations, they accommodate about six people per train. So that's part of the reason, you know, we're trying to be upfront that we are proposing to eliminate Saturday service on the Blue Island branch, on the Electric District, and that is just based on our ridership data. So that, that's part of it. I will say, though, because we're in Blue Island, that there, in, about two years ago, we had increased the Rock Island service from 20 trains to 32 trains. And actually, the Rock Island service is express, there's six express in, six express out, and that it's basically a faster trip. So that's an alternative that Blue Island residents actually have on Saturdays.
But then I would also have to take a bus too, to get to where I was going. I don't want to do that.
No, again, that's-
This takes me right into my office.
And that, that's the comments we're looking for. So with this, it's just worth noting that there is an alternative rail line, basically across the street from the station. It actually is across the street from the station. So that, with that, currently, there is no Sunday service on Blue Island that, that not changed with this proposal, but with that, we'll take any, any questions or comments.
So real quick, we want to hear from you guys, but let's keep it, we'll answer your questions after you ask, and we'll go through the crowd as such. We just want to keep it formal. I understand that there are some frustrations here, but we want to be here to inform you, but also hear your, hear your comments.
And if I could add one thing, I'm sorry, number- This is what we're looking at doing right now, because of the ridership and things like that. As things come back and things grow and things, you know, things develop, we can bring it back. We're not moving away, we're not taking stations away, we're not pulling up track. You know, that's the whole idea of this, is to match service delivery with what, with what the ridership actually is and the need. So as things develop and things get more robust and that, we'd like to come out here and say, we're adding a bunch of trains, we're doing this, we're doing that, but we've also got a problem just like everybody-
I understand what you're saying, but my whole thing is, I don't understand why you would take this train away when there is enough ridership on it. I understand that, you know, let's try this, we'll bring it back, it doesn't work. But don't take it away to begin with, because it already works. That's what I was, it really does work. There's a lot of people on our trains, on our train in the morning. I don't understand why you take it away and then turn it into a bunch more stops.
Could I add something before, if I may, in front? Again, people who don't know who I am, I'm Mayor of Argus, and we got the staff here. Here's my situation as the mayor of city of Buick. We consider Buick as a transportation hub, and that's something we've, that we've tried to push, not only now, but in the past. I'm 55 years of age, and I've always known the electric line or the IC line or the metro electric line as being there, as well as the Rock Island line. And I will admit, I've used more the Rock Island line than I have the electric, but we've been used to having both lines there, having that option. And I'm against any cuts.
Thank you.
Any cuts, okay? Here's the thing, if I can add this. We've been here to promote the South Line, all right? We got the Cal Sac Trail coming through Buick, but instead of just thinking going that way, let's just think about people coming from downtown, coming this way to enjoy not only Blue Island, but the surrounding suburbs, what we have to offer, all right? I've heard about the gentleman, they know I sent them a letter. I'll personally give you guys another letter, so you can address it to your boards of how we, our position as a city, of where we stand, that we're supporting the commuters, the riders, who use it every day to go to work, or play or whatever, okay? The main thing is, I think that since the electric line, there's been a fault, not only through Metro, the RTA, that you haven't promoted that line as much as you promoted the Rock Island line, because it's so hidden, people could forget about it. Even we, now, including myself, who have lived all my life in Blue Island, that line is vital to this town, okay? We consider ourselves unofficially a transportation hub. We've been in the spotlight for possibly being express rail in the future. And again, let's think about the Cal Sac Trail and everything else that this, not only Blue Island has to offer, but all the South suburb has to offer. When the Presidential Library is finally built, you're going to have people, and hopefully, if this goes through, ridership will go up to go, and go to that location. But let's think about it going both ways. People from Chicago coming south and us going that way. Whether I see the elimination completely down to zero, how about let's gradually take it down, cut it in half or do something, listen to the people, to the riders, and go from there, instead of just completely taking it out. That's where I'm at.
I'm Michael from the Buick. I was going to say that I understand the late-night ridership, that you're going to cut that, or if you cut that, you know, the late hours. I understand the weekends also, Saturday and Sunday, you know, because things have changed and people don't come out as much as they're used to. You know, I understand that. But the rush hour trains with the ridership that is up, remember the rush hour trains? See if you can go around that or lay another track to go over there. You guys know how to do that. Let that track over there, everyone can go over there, so that the rush hour trains can continue to go. It's not that many, so, and then, I understand some of the cuts in the late night. I understand that.
I fully, those are the kind of comments we do need. Especially, please send those in. And just saying, this doesn't work for me, well, that, that's not, we can analyze. We need specifics. We, I know your train. I definitely know your train. I've heard you. We will definitely be looking at your train, and we'll be looking at why we pushed the stops over there, and we're looking at, maybe that's not, not the best alternative for, for those stop pads. But these are the comments that we're needing. That's why we're out here. We do not have a definitive date of when this is going in, because we are already looking at what we can do. We are trying to work with you guys, we're trying to hear from, from your comments.
But is it possible that you can lay another track to go over that way with it?
That's not, that's not as likely, because it's very, very expensive to lay another track in. We've got the infrastructure that we have, we've got to maintain the infrastructure we have. We're trying to adjust trains that make sense and things, listen to everybody, get the comments, and where we can tweak this and make it better, we'll try to do that to the best of our ability. That's why it's so important for the comments to come back. Not that I just don't like it, if you cut anything, you guys are not thinking or whatever, that does nothing for us. If you've got a certain concern, put those down, so when we look at everybody's concerns, we can try to address them the best way we can. And the gentleman in the green, you've been, you've had it up several different times, you've got quite a few.
My name's Bill Ferrin, and I'm an alderman here at Fort Worth. So my concern is that, I guess my question maybe is, why is ridership on this line so low? And the answer, I'm in marketing also, and I think you've got a marketing problem there, and the answer seems pretty obvious. The Rock Island service, which serves basically White Sox Park as a big destination and the South Loop, doing quite well. Your service is really good. Our Metro Electric branch that goes to Bahman, the museum beside the street, Hyde Park, Soldier Field, the music, the Adler Planetarium, the aquarium, the, the field museum, and Michigan Avenue, is not doing well. Why? The service partly sucks. You have very slow trains, those evening trains, we have to change in Kensington, it's just atrocious. I talk to people, nobody's going to do that.
They have to fix the stations.
The, now, the weekend service, again, you know, you're making a cutback. On the Rock Island, I can board a train here on schedule, I can be down in 20 minutes. In fact, I'm downtown in 17 minutes on the Rock Island. On the IC Electric, it can be over an hour. It's really obvious. The service on the electric, Metro Electric, is just incredibly inferior. And as, I agree with most of what the mayor said, but one thing I don't agree with, it's not about promotion, it's about service. People aren't riding that train because the service is atrocious. And it has been for decades. And now the solution is to cut service? I don't understand that. I don't know what kind of marketing work you've done to look at this or to try to understand. It seems really obvious what's, what the problem is. The solution is not cutting back, the solution is improving the service. I know that costs money, but we are being asked to give up service so that Hyde Park can have better service, and I delight for the people at Hyde Park, it's great, and the service there is great, and they use it, of course. Service is good. We don't use this here because the service is bad. And I think you need to stop this whole thing. Step back and look at, what can we do to work, you know, cooperatively to improve the service and increase the service, because it's not only important to the South Manes and to Blue Island, it's important to Metro. What you're doing is going to result in even lower ridership on the electric line, and you're going to cut back even more. And you say you're not going to walk away from it, but I would suspect, if I was in your position at some point, I would, because I do exactly what you're doing right now, looking at the ridership. You're, who wants to run up these trains? It makes no sense. I get that. But why are they empty? I think the reason is obvious, I don't think Metro has addressed it, and I think you really need to. Thank you.
I want to mention too, I am one of the frequent riders on the 439 and the 532. Now, I've seen quite a few people on the 439 from Blue Island going to Kensington and switching over to the University Park train. I don't think that should be cut out, or the 532. I do see quite a few people on that train going out of Blue Island, switching over to Kensington.
Yes, the, those are the trains we are proposing to make a one-seat ride, basically those two trains into one train, that goes all the way downtown, not require a train for Kensington, because, because it does drive down ridership. Now, saying that currently gets downtown, as we're saying, the 557, the 439, you're saying that, you know, the folks who got the first shift, we are looking at accommodating that, perhaps moving that train even earlier to closer to 439. But it is more comfortable if you have a one-seat ride, and that's, that's why we're making that proposal. Now, if there's a good comment, again, please write that down and be specific on those two, so we can, we can analyze that.
You're saying the fire plaque would go straight down?
Yeah, it wouldn't require a transfer in this proposal, correct. So it would make all the way to one each station.
So that you folks are not faceless corporate, could you identify yourselves?
Sure.
I'm Don Orsinger, Executive Director, CEO of Metro.
Jeff Brants, Manager of Service Design.
Marty Ryan, Metro's Chief Transportation Officer.
Dan Nadoski, the Supervisor of Schedules and Services at Metro.
Trey Blase, Service Planner.
We want you.
Everybody knows you.
I was going to say, there's a couple of them here, there, you know.
Well, we have to appreciate that you folks have come down. You're the people that make the decisions, so we really appreciate it.
We don't take this lightly. We appreciate it. We've looked at it, we've tried to analyze it, we've tried to look at funding, we've tried to look at service, we've tried to look at where is the service, where is the ridership, where is it growing, where is it not growing, and make those adjustments. We also didn't do that in a vacuum. We worked pretty collaboratively amongst our agency, and now we're reaching out into the communities that this affects and try to get some thoughts and things. Now, we're not going to be able to do everything that everybody asks, because this isn't a personal service, it's still a transportation. However, if there's things that make sense that we can do, we want to do it. I mean, we want to listen to our customers and give our customers what they're looking for. That's what we'd like to do.
Why not, you guys, you know, pick a time and ride some of these trains and see what the ridership is like? I mean, that's a good idea. You're getting out there with the people that actually take the trains, see what's going on, you know? You'll see then where you need to cut.
Well, I can, I can answer that for you. That's a good suggestion, but we do do that. Not only do we do that, we do a formal count every two years that have people at every station, every platform counting every person.
But I mean, you guys, nobody else.
We do that, we do that.
Dan was out with-
We do that.
With counters.
And then not only that, because you're really worried about, you know, are we really understanding the true ridership on these trains? But every train is counted every day by the conductor, and that gets turned in, so every day we know how many people are on that train. So we, we do have those numbers, and that's how we base a lot of what we're doing today on. It wasn't by, we just didn't want to come to Blue Island, we wanted to do this or do something in South Chicago or somewhere else. You analyze the numbers, that's what you do when you're in business, you, you operate on data, and you look at the data and you say, you know, this doesn't, doesn't work right now, things have changed. We're running schedules that are 30 years old, and now we're trying to look at, how do you match this? So what we did, just to give everybody the idea of how we did it, we took a, like it was a blank piece of paper, knowing the ridership that we have and the times that we're going and things like that, tried to build a system. Now, with the infrastructure that you have, we couldn't put new tracks in and different things like that, but with the infrastructure that you have, what makes the most sense to be able to take your resources and put them in places where they're going to be utilized to the highest value? That's what we've done. On top of that, we said, we need to go out and talk with the communities, we need to come out to Blue Island, we need to come out to, last night we were in Flossmore, tomorrow we'll be at University of Chicago. Monday, we were at the Cultural Center at 71st Street, you know, on the South Chicago branch. So we wanted to listen, and quite honestly, not everybody's happy about things, you know that, because anytime you change things, people aren't happy. What we ask is, write down, let us know what, how it is affecting your ridership, your life and things like that, and let us know, and we'll look at it. And where we can tweak things up that make sense that we can do, we're going to try to do it. We want our customers to be happy, that's what we want to do. But we also want to provide the right transportation and the right service and areas that we can provide.
So Mr. Orsinger, we really appreciate you being here, and I do understand the problem you're facing, and I get why you're doing what you're doing. And I think you understand why we're frustrated, because, you know, we're losing a good service here, and I think more, you know, to the point, I know what's going to happen is going to happen, so we, we accept that. But I would hope that going forward, we could look towards, you know, how can we realize the potential of this line, which is really something? Because, I mean, really, from a marketing perspective, if you look at two identical lines and one serves a million people and one serves half a million people, if you had identical service down both lines, you ought to have double serve, double the ridership on the one that serves a million. And that's kind of the situation we've got right here. But the service down the electric branch just, it isn't adequate. It's just not something that's attractive to people, and that is the problem, in my opinion. And I'd love to see a way down the future where, you know, we can work towards finding the funding, finding the resources, you know, to make that service viable again, because it's not viable right now.
We've heard your comments.
I do appreciate it.
I like the one I'm hearing.
Yes, sir.
Hey? Karen Bala, question I have, and I'm not a real person per se, but Illinois Central, Karen Bala, question I have, and I'm not a rail person per se, but Illinois Central, as I know it, in the metro, when were they combined to Metro?
When did the Illinois Central and Metro, when did Metro purchase it?
Yeah.
I believe it was May 1st, 1987.
1987.
Yeah. I happen to be there as well.
My second question is, since 1987, the only thing that I've seen in its improvement to that Illinois Central was about 13 years ago or so, when you remodeled the station a little bit because of need, of safety reasons. Otherwise, all along, from what I see from 119 down, there's two or three stops that have never been addressed. Never money has been spent to improve the services, Mr. Farnum, to improve and have more people be accommodated, to be a few more comfortable, to come here, to be serviced. People sometimes drive to different locations or they actually drive rather than stopping to take the ridership. So again, and these other metro stations that I sometimes, I read in the Illinois Municipal Magazine, that they, Tinley Park's got this new metro, Find Out Arts, there's such and such a metro station, millions of dollars spent. Is that all yours or is that a combination with the community?
Well, let me just answer it this way because you started out talking about something. I want to correct some of the comments that you made. You said there's been no money spent in, it was about 13 years ago. And I assume you're talking about the rehabilitation of Vermont Street itself, correct? Is that what you're talking about? Which is true. But also, the last couple of years, we've spent an enormous amount of money, not money that's coming from the state or anywhere else, money that Metro has, that we've invested. State Street we did, 127th Street. If you look at 127th Street today and where it was five years ago, it's a complete different station. We've invested a lot. We've invested a lot in the electric district. Let me just share one other tidbit of information. When you talk about investment on the electric district, the electric district has the most trains. It has the newest cars, $585 million worth of cars we just got. We finished that order, I believe it was a little over a year ago. The newest cars of any line, the best on-time performance. So to say that we haven't invested in it really isn't an accurate statement. Now, can we do everything? No, we can't do everything. Now, let's go to, you said Tinley Park. You're equating Tinley Park with some of the stations here. When we have money to do a station and the station comes up that, we've got X amount of money and then the community, the village puts in the other amount of money. So if, let's say there was a $4 million investment and Blue Island wanted to put a $20 million station in there, we have $4 million, you have $16 million, you can put whatever you'd like to do. That's how that works. There's no magic number, but that's basically how it works. So it's the community's putting in, it's Metro putting in a certain amount. So, but the bottom line is, that's really what it is. So when you say we haven't invested, I disagree with that. I know sometimes people look at it that we haven't invested because there's still some stations out there that need to be redone. But we've got 241 stations on our system and it's very hard for us with the budgets that we have and we're no different than the community of Blue Island, the village of Blue Island, the town of Blue Island. We're no different. You know, we've got budget shortfalls. We've got a lot of things we're trying to do. We're trying to keep the trains we've got on right now running. We're trying to put money into stations. I was on the phone and I'm not going to mention names with a state rep on the way down here, on the way to Blue Island saying, hey, we got to get something going here. This is, we're being told now that, you know, we're in a crunch time. If something doesn't happen by June 30th, they've, you know, there's a lot of things not going to happen and we've got to get that going. So it's not that we've got money and aren't spending it. We've spent an enormous amount of money on the electric district, trying to keep stations and upgrade them to the best of our ability, doing stop yeps on some of the things. Look what we did at 111th Street, you know, the Pullman District. We did that on our own resources. We made that, that wasn't a station you'd really want to go to. We made that kind of like an historical station. Looks like a Pullman car. So we are doing some things out there for the good. So I appreciate what you're seeing, but I also want, I don't want it not noticed of the good things that we are trying to do for the communities.
Thank you.
So the gentleman here has something.
Hi, I've been taking Metro for 17 years. For the most part, I enjoy my studies, but my thing is, I'm one of the minority people here. I do take Saturday service. And to completely cut Saturday service, you know what, because I think it's a museum campus. A guy must not go to museum campus. They have to take another train or a bus or something, which costs more money. So I'm one of the few people, a few minority people that couldn't make it because the meeting right now is at time they were working. So I got to leave it early. So I'm speaking of them as well. So don't completely cut it. I can see maybe a couple of trains in the middle, have an early morning and a late afternoon and a couple of trains in the middle, you can cut a little of those. Don't completely cut service. You can't, as the mayor said, you can't enjoy the city weekends. That's when things happen, concerts, you know, a lot of things going on downtown, street fairs. You can't enjoy, you can't enjoy Blue Island, you can't enjoy the city if you cut service completely. Another thing is, you could do is, I know it might not be an option, but instead of going all the way downtown, you could have some of the trains, like they do at night times, run from Blue Island to Kensington where you can transfer over. That way you don't have to spend all the money, you go all the way downtown. You can just go halfway to Kensington and somehow take you out where you can transfer to another train. And that way you don't have to go all the way downtown to pay. A lot of people, people that do ride it on the weekends, which aren't that many, but they are dedicated. They do ride every weekend to get to work, to get to museum campus, to get to have fun, you know, go see concerts because a lot of things happen, do on the weekends. And some of them, a lot of the people at Blue Island I know that take trains with walk. They don't have, they don't have the elderly, they have kids, they don't drive and they do walk. And a lot of the people I talked to won't be able to get downtown to enjoy any of the fun in Blue Island and over here.
Appreciate the comment and that's what you need to, on your comments.
I have, I've been emailing you guys. Every day I email you guys.
No, I appreciate it. We do appreciate everybody's comments. We really do. We really want to understand and see what everyone's.
There are some people that do enjoy the weekends.
I wanted to say too, there's times I've come from downtown after nine o'clock. What are we supposed to do then if there's no trains coming back?
We have brought alternate service pieces over there for the CTA, for those kind of things. The issue is that nine o'clock trains have zero, one, the occasional rider that rides it once a year, that's not sustainable. Running empty trains is just not sustainable.
Concerts.
The one thing, one thing else I want to point out that Blue Island has been very blessed, really, when you think about the Rock Island service and the electric service, there's a lot of places that have one service and they don't have the type of service you'd like to have. So we're pretty fortunate in Blue Island to have that type of service. And like the mayor said, you know, we need to promote it. We need to ride it. We need to do things. And as things develop and things come back, we want to come back out here just in forums like this saying, hey, we're adding this, we're doing this, we're doing that. So it's not that we're moving away. We're not moving away. It's, we're going to be here and we're going to grow as communities grow and have to make adjustments when they don't. So the real goal for all of us is, is to increase ridership. Increase ridership, then we're all working collaboratively to make things happen and also work with our legislature to make sure they're funding the transportation system like they should be funding the transportation system, to provide the service.
Man in the back.
How are you going to know if you cut the trains on the weekend completely on Saturday? How are you going to know if your ridership is going to go up or not because you don't have any trains running? So how are you going to know to bring it back?
Well, what you would do is you look at the community development, like right now, I'll give a perfect example. If you go, a lot of the people take the train downtown, you go through Hyde Park, you see cranes, you see buildings, you see a lot of things happening, you see development, right? You go to different places, no matter where it's at, whether it's Hyde Park or it's up north someplace. As the communities grow, developments pick up, there's more need for trains and transportation. You know that. It's not that you, of course, if you don't have a train, you can't see the ridership increase on the train. But that's not how you judge whether you need a train or not. You judge whether you need a train or not is with existing trains that you have and then also the development in the community, how things are going. That's what you look at. That's what you're planning, people. We've got people from our planning department back there, but that's what we do. We look at that, we analyze it, we forecast it. Because, I got to be honest with you, as you're planning things, if we needed to buy new railcars, if there is money someday, if we needed to buy new railcars, you just don't go down to the Ford builder and buy a new railcar. It takes several years to get on the waiting list and you get the contracts going, to get the production going. So it's a, it's one of those things where you're looking at it, if you're looking at an area that all of a sudden you realize it's going to be something big. I'll give an example. US Steelworks out there in South Chicago, right? That was sold last year, earlier this year. And they're planning a, just a monster development. As that development goes through and the buildings start going up and people are moving there and rider, then you would add trains. Of course you would do that. But the beauty of the electric district, we can move things pretty quickly. It's not like we've got a, I would like to say we'd be in a position where we'd have to find new cars, but we're in a position where we can quickly add trains if the need was there.
I'm listening to that end of a few times, sorry.
I'm going to give you a few. The chairman said that, you know, money was, because Pullman was just deserting, right?
Correct.
So, I mean, it wasn't just like spending money to be nice, it was, you know, but, and I talked to a few people here and I'm a newbie at this and I just did like some few little Google searches and, you know, found out about the board wasn't pointed, about how they're spending money, what's the tax figures picked off and, but I have a new question just based on the little literature that they were nice enough to hand me. It's kind of the question that Bill, my alderman and my mayor, that ridership has been going down. Has there been any like research in why it's been going down? And the question that I have, it says that ridership has been going down, but you put the newest cars on there and now those cars can't go anywhere else on the line. It just, and then, I guess I'm not understanding like the thinking that went into it. It seems like kind of like a waste of money that you knew the ridership was going down, you put newer cars on there that now can't be used anywhere else. It just seems like kind of.
I could speak to that.
And just one more because the last thing with it, it's like bigger. You would be subsidizing, if there was reduced fares on the Metro Electric, you'd be subsid, the other areas would be subsidizing it. But it seems that we're almost in a position that we're subsidizing other neighborhoods now because of the foreplanting that was done, or what seems to be, I think I should say.
Sure. So regarding the cars, the cars that were replaced were over 30 years old. They had already outlived their useful life. We're paying outrageous prices because the components were no longer available. That technology on the older Highliners are actually GE technology from 1925. So we had to do something. The Metro Electric district's not going away. So we did replace the fleet. It was a responsible thing to do. It's much cheaper to run today and maintain because things are now micro-processed and solid-state components versus the relay technology they had back there. So those cars will hopefully be in service 40 years from now. So.
So for years though, that they have real, I think, cars, is that what you said?
Yes, yes.
And that may have contributed to the decline in the ridership, like.
No, but when you look at, when you look at the frequency of trains, so out of the 11 lines, you run 170 trains a day. The next busiest line, the line that moves more passengers than anyone else is the BN. They have 94. So you can kind of see, the Rock Island has 76. So while you have 70, while the Rock Island has 76, you have 170. Even when we look at the proposal of what's going to be reduced, on a Saturday, the BN is going to have 28 trains that run on Saturday. You're going to have eight. So the frequency's there, the equipment's there, the equipment's brand new. It's true that you can't interchange them with the diesels. So we do have a diesel, we have other, all the other lines are diesel locomotives, there's 836 coaches, they're not interchangeable. But this district's going to be here forever. It's going to be running forever. Those cars are going to be reliable and running for the next 40 years.
But you said that you didn't see a link between the decline in ridership.
No, because.
And categorically.
I spoke to you and you had an opportunity to do a little research online. If you go online.
Yeah, just a cursor, Google search.
Sure. If you go online, we'll be happy to share with you, one thing about Metro Electric is, month after month, it consistently has the best on-time performance out of our entire system. So I'm saying that whether.
Even with the outdated.
Even with the old cars, yes. Our mechanics are so good, they're able to keep those cars running reliably to where you're averaging between 96 and 98 percent. There's a lot of lines that can't make 95.
Is there any indication of why the ridership declined so much, just on this line?
Can I explain why?
Or has there been any research? It does seem like ads that it's declined so much.
I'll just say again, the reason seems pretty obvious. The service is not adequate. Again, you've got identical endpoint, you start from Blue Island, one line ends up at Listowel Street, one, it's at Millennium Park. The Millennium Park lines are way more many destinations, the ridership is way down. And the service, the schedules are not adequate and that is why people don't ride it. It's really pretty obvious. And I'm not asking you to wave a magic wand and solve it all here, but to me, that seems like the obvious problem.
It's the chicken in the egg. You say if we put more trains on, the ridership will go up. We're saying that due to the ridership, there's no warranty to put in.
I think you're looking at the wrong end of the telescope.
What is the reason for us not having the express trains in the morning when we have to get up and go to work? We cannot transfer to an express train in the morning.
So we can look at the specific trains you're speaking of because we do have a few.
No, you only have one and that's at 6:40.
Yeah, so, sure, sure. And then, again, we were looking at reconfiguring the morning rush. Morning rush by and large is not touched, but there are a few cases.
But no, the ones in the evening is not touched. It's just the ones in the morning.
Yeah, yeah. And again, so if you have specific times, please write those down so we can look at that. This whole exercise, whole proposal was looking at how we can reconfigure, reconfigure our trains and the stop times, right? To make what we hope to be more efficient service. Now, this is a case for, as you mentioned.
No, you got the 7:02 and you got the 7:20.
Sure. And then, again, we were.
No express trains. That means we have to catch the local train. That's meaning it's going to take us, like I have to be at work at eight, I won't be able to take the 7:20. I have to catch the 6:40 in order to transfer.
And that's the kind of.
That's wrong.
We're looking for. That's the kind of feedback we're looking for. In doing this, we were trying to make the best use of our equipment. Some of those trains in Blue Island, to be frank, had lower ridership.
Yeah, but not the lower ridership.
One second please. The way you get higher ridership sometimes is making more stops to get more passengers at other stations. So if there is a case however where it does interfere with your start time, that's the type of stuff we're looking at. How we can tweak, you know, here and there. If there's some of the train that you think needs to hit before eight, please write that down. We will look at that and if there's a possibility, what we'll do there, maybe make some of those earlier stops, flag stops, whatever it may be, we'll take a deep look at that.
Yeah, but y'all making it convenient for people at Hyde Park, get a train like this.
Yes.
And that's wrong because we paying the most money. Y'all didn't say nothing when y'all went up 33 percent and then y'all just went up again. That's wrong. So why are we paying our money?
And having the services cut, I don't think that's right either. Raising the prices for the tickets than having the service cut.
That's wrong.
What is the difference between operating a, I realize this is kind of hard to peg down, but what's the difference between operating a Rock Island train, a diesel train and running an electric train? Is there much cost difference between operating one train versus the other?
No, not really. When you look at the grand scope of it, you've got the electric power for the, you know, the train versus diesel electricity, but then you also have the maintenance of another complete rail, which is your cantonary system. So as you look at it, it really isn't a huge difference in it.
The big advantage, which drives up that on-time performance, is on the Rock Island, if that locomotive has a mechanical problem, the train dies en route and go nowhere. On the Metro Electric, whether it's a four, or six, or a seven-car train, one of the cars could become defective and the other five are just pushing along. So there's a big advantage to being a customer on the electric because the probability of having a mechanical breakdown that delays you is much less.
I want to mention too, where there's been times where the 439 has left Blue Island going to Kensington and they just turn around coming back because of track trouble or stuff on the tracks.
You are correct.
Sure. And we have to make those decisions in the spur of the moment. Sometimes if we can't get through, we have to move the equipment off the rails and completely disrupt everybody's trip that day. We try to minimize impacts during any operational problem. And it's, unfortunately, sometimes you just have to move equipment out of the way so we can continue running.
Sorry, I came in late, but did you talk about the Saturday service being cut completely?
I didn't.
He represented you well.
I was, my suggestion was, can you compromise and go every two hours like they do on Sundays? Because I take the Sunday train out of Homewood because there is no Sunday service out of Blue Island. So I have to take it sometime, but, you know, every two hours would be better than nothing.
I highly suggest that you definitely write in, say what trains you do take, reasons why you take those trains.
why you take those trains. We're here to gather information in order to keep them informed. So we've talked a little bit about this, we've talked about compromises with that, but what we need is specific information.
Email.
Oh, yeah. There's also a handwritten, that we are collecting.
Can I have, Bill, you answer my question, because I may have just missed out. Did you say why you think the ridership is declining so much, just on...
You're asking me?
Yeah.
We can't answer that question. I know this gentleman here, you know, said it's because of the poor train service and things like that. Where the train service here is much better than a lot of places that we have train service. So I don't know what that is. Maybe it's the amount of housing, maybe it's the amount of business, maybe it's, I can't answer that question. Alls I can tell you is, as we look at the ridership, and we try, again, we started with a clean piece of paper, because these schedules have been around for thirty years, maybe tweaked a little bit, but it's been the same schedule forever. And the ridership on the Electric has continued to decline, except for one area. And I think we all know the area, it was the Hyde Park area, where there's a lot of, you know, booming things going on right now. I have a feeling the South Chicago branch, at some point in time in the very near future, will blossom, like you haven't seen it. This area, I was talking to the mayor with all of the hopes and dreams and things that are going on out here, connecting things up, that's going to happen here too. As, when it does, then we're going to be able to put train service and add it and have a more robust system, so. But to answer why, why you take the train that you do, or why you take the train that you do, I assume it's for work, I assume it's the most convenient way, I assume you're happy with the service, but if you didn't take the train, I wouldn't know why you didn't personally take the train. So I can't tell you why the ridership is down. I mean, we could ask a hundred people, and they'll have a hundred different answers, so. But the fact is, we're dealing with the data, and the data is that the ridership is down.
But doesn't the data, I mean, I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but I will for a minute, doesn't the data suggest that the Rock Island service from Blue Island, where you can get downtown, and it's less than twenty minutes, and the IC service from Blue Island, where it's like forty-five minutes to an hour, doesn't that suggest that there's a real differential in the services that would defeat the electric service?
You keep on suggesting that, like, it should be obvious to us, but really, when you think about it, when you get on the train at Blue Island, on the Rock Island, on the main line...
Right.
On the main line, then you have a, pretty much, an express service going down unless you're stopping at Hundred and Third, you're stopping at Ninety-Fifth Street, you're stopping at Eighty-Seventh Street.
It's a great service.
And, but what I'm saying is, the people on that train have already stopped, they've left Joel yet, they stopped at New Lennox, they stopped at Hickory Creek, they stopped at Mopena, they stopped at Aviathan Avenue, they stopped at Oak Park, they stopped at Oak Forest, they stopped at Robbins. So they've endured that ride already, where if you get on at Blue Island, on a main-line Rock Island train, you're out of rock.
Right.
So, you know, you've got to look at it, if you're going to compare it, compare it to the Beverly Branch, where we're stopping every four blocks, and look at the time on the Beverly Branch. Then you would have, then you would truly be comparing apples to apples.
Well, I mean, the conclusion I would draw is, run an express train from Blue Island on the Electric line, and bam, it's worked really well. And I know, I understand, it's pie in the sky, blah, blah, but it does seem like there is a conclusion that you could reach from all this.
I appreciate it, and write down your concerns, but if you're really looking at it, if you're going to draw comparisons, you've got to really draw comparisons from apples to apples and things like that. So I can appreciate what you're saying, and the whole reason we're out here, once again, we want to hear, we want to hear concerns. And if we can tweak things up and make things better, can we leave it the way that it is? No, I'm going to be honest with you, there's, I'm not going to leave here and tell you something that's not true. It isn't working the way that it is. But if we can make it better and tweak things up, that's what we want to do. We want to hear and try to make things better.
And again, thank you for coming out with this.
Well, thank you. This is, this is important, this is important outreach, it really is.
When do, when do this goes into effect?
We don't have a certain date. What we're, the goal we're shooting for, I'll be, I'll give you that, we're shooting for a goal of around, was it mid-September?
Yeah.
Somewhere around mid-September. Because it takes a lot, believe it or not, it's not just, we come out and do meetings and put a schedule in place. There's crews, there's hours of service, there's a lot of things that have to happen to make it happen. There's schedules that have to be drawn up, there's just so many things. Then there's the outreach of the final products, so everybody understands that there'll change.
There's a question back there.
Yeah, I work down at, work down at Navy Pier, and you're on Saturdays, if you cut that train and I can't get to work, my wife works north of Millennium Park, and it's no way we'll be able to get to work if we have to walk from La Salle Street Station. I know you run eleven trains on a Saturday, can't you cut it down to two or three in the morning, two or three in the afternoon? That would at least alleviate the people who have to work on Saturdays. And as far as, somebody, as the one gentleman said, there's a lot of things going on downtown at that IC line goes by. Why can't you do a little advertising? You have all the other things in your, in your trains, why not advertise, hey, there's a festival here, our train goes by there. There's museum campus, our train goes by there. If you advertise a little bit, you're going to get more ridership. Raising the price, cutting the trains is not going to help.
Thank you.
But they are like, advertising would help? Like advertising locally in Blue Island?
Wendy, you want to come up and talk about some of the advertising that we have done, specifically for this line, and what we, what we have done?
Hi, I'm Wendy Abrams, External Affairs at Metro. And actually, this is my third meeting, and I've had this question asked all three times, I'll have to answer. I think that we have just hired a new advertising agency. I think the board and our leadership sort of recognized that we need to change things up a little bit. So we have been, they have been on board with us for about the past year, right? And we've done a lot of market research. We just launched our first new advertising campaign last week. Right now, it's kind of more of an umbrella campaign in promoting Metro overall, it's not line-specific. But I think that when the changes are rolled out in mid-September, we recognize that we have quite a bit of work to do to make sure that people understand what the schedule is and how it's going to change, and try to get more people on board our trains. So that's sort of the plan right now. But to your point, sir, we actually, I think, do a pretty good job of promoting events through social media and earned media, but look to see some more paid media for those kinds of things to help us build our ridership in the next, in the years to come. Because we recognize that we have more, we can, we can do it.
But you have some older people that is not on social media.
Right.
So you still need to reach them also.
I could not agree with you more, and we definitely recognize, we do billboards, we do radio, we do social media, we do earned media, basically newspapers, we place ads and print media. So I think, I think that we have a pretty robust program now, and I think that we're going to be doing a lot more, but I absolutely agree that we need to be more line-specific, because I think that's really important.
Well, what about working, like, with Blue Island? I mean, the hospital over there, I mean, the older citizens go in there, put advertisements in there, the mayor can work it out.
You've got the foreign newspaper representative here, the local newspaper right in the height.
Exactly, I mean, I mean, advertising. And if you advertise in Blue Island and the surrounding communities, that, you know, all these things are going on in Chicago...
Right.
You can, you know, get the train in Blue Island. Why not come down on the weekend, then you wouldn't have to be cutting all this. But give it a try before you cut it.
Right, right.
And I'll throw this as a plug to Blue Island. Example, Maple Tree Inn, boarded fifteenth, in the South Metro area, is a restaurant. That's a plus outside trail. All the restaurants up and down Old Western Avenue, and up and down the Blue Island Business District, the parks, the people, the hospital, everything, all of that should also be included.
Right, it's bringing people from the city down into Blue Island.
Come this way, the brewery.
And the hospital over there, there's people that are going to need to use the hospital too. I mean, it's got the best cardiovascular that I've ever been through, so, I mean, things can be done.
Yeah, no, I was glad to hear that you made sort of your pitch for all the great things that are going on in your community, because definitely, I think, we're going to be doing more and more of that, sort of, it's more of a partnership, really.
The slogan that Jason Barry came up with, "Think outside the loop." So that's what it is. Let's think outside the loop, not always focus that way, let's come this way, south.
And you said you were doing market research, you know, as this gentleman said, that there's been no research done on, like, why the decline? Maybe they could be part of the research, you know, oh, we're just, before you make an absolute cut, which is drastic, you've got to market research, they could find out a little, you know, why is it happening? Before you do, that maybe you could do smaller steps if you knew why it was happening. And if, you know, you're hiring someone to do market research, you know, why not utilize it? And to look at some of the demographics that are being affected by it.
No, I think that's a good point. I think I have a pretty good sense of the demographics, but there's definitely more that we can learn, there's no doubt.
And listen to this, we have a lot of Millennials, Generation X, they have to be informed that that line exists. A lot of us old-timers know that the IC, the Metro Line, Electric has been there, a lot of them don't know that it exists. They've only know about the Rock Island, right? Let's know about the other line.
Amen. And I have a theory of an answer of why it's declining. Simple market research, right there.
Yeah, just to reiterate about the Saturday service, please consider reducing instead of eliminating, because I've seen one that goes away...
Considering we don't even know why it's happening.
Once it goes away, it's going to be very difficult to reinstate that. You talk about South Chicago developments and all that, maybe putting a line there, that's great, you can see that development. I feel like a city like Blue Island, you have a very established community, but it also tends to be an older community. So how do you assess new families coming in, new generations building up this place, when you're not going to see the buildings come up, when it's simply more of a change in ownership? So how do you know that you need that Saturday service if it's completely taken away?
Well, that's where we'll be working with the community. When the community, when the development comes and more people, you know, move into the community and things happen, we will, we will definitely look at bringing train service, the additional service out there. As we do, not just at Blue Island, or not just on the Electric district, we're looking at the whole system. This is being done holistically throughout the system, where we think we need to, you know, move service, better put resources and things, that's what we need to do. It doesn't work just to sit here, and that's partially our fault. We probably should have made some of these decisions several years ago, but the hope was, things would come back and things would sustain themselves, things would be better, and things like that. And it's not showing that right now, and that's, that's the issue that we have. But the good thing is, we're not taking up the track, we're not moving the station, we're not doing any of that. So if we need to add additional service, we can do that pretty quickly.
So you're saying that, like, to take away something, you just look at kind of the numbers, that, you know, you know, some of the research involved, and you just look at the data. But when you're talking about adding it back, you don't look at the data, you look at, you know, the things that are coming, I mean, you make the decisions differently?
Well, absolutely, we look at data, we get data in many forms. As we look at communities, and our planning department analyzes where growth areas are, what developments are going on out there, we look at those communities, we keep track of what's going on, TODs, which are transit-orientated development-type things, where people are beginning to be building larger complexes close to the rail stations, big apartment buildings, things like that. You look at those, and you start to look before, because you don't want to start looking at it after everything's built and nobody can get on the train. You look at as things are developing and you plan for that. So that's what we're trying to do, is we're trying to move the service and where it needs, and provide the best service we can for what we have. And then also, as things grow, five years from now, we might be in a completely different situation. We may be, I can't tell you that. But as things change, we need to be more nimble in making those changes, because with the scarce dollars and funding that we have, we've got to be able to sustain the system. We just have to do it, it's, it's nothing more than that. We've got to be able to put resources and trains where the needs are for those trains, for the people that are using the trains. It doesn't, we can't sustain a system running a train with one person, two people, three people, when, when it's very costly to do that. The rail service evidently isn't the service for to try to handle that. Maybe a bus, maybe something else would be better. I'm not an advocate for moving anything off of the train. But at the end of the day, I'm sorry?
I said, that's more money. You transfer a length of land to another service.
Alls I'm saying is, it costs a lot of money to provide rail service and sustain it. And what we want to do is make sure we can continue to sustain it. We don't want to let it get so bad where we have to make some drastic decisions. That's the problem. Most of the time, people don't do things until it's way too late, and then they've got to make choices that are much tougher than if that had made them incrementally long the way. So we could do like a lot of people do, hide your head in the sand, think it's going to go away and the problem's going to get better, and in fact, it's going to get worse, and then come back and say, the service cuts that we were talking about before are nothing close to what we may need to do in the future. We don't want to do that. We want to identify, we want to provide the service, we want to work with the communities, we want to hear from, from everybody, that's what we're trying to do. We're no different than you run your household. You've got X amount of money to run the household, and you try to live within your means to run the household, for whatever money you have coming in. That's all we're trying to do, and build service, build, build ridership, that's what we're trying to do. So we want to work with you.
That's what you're saying, you're saying compromise, that you're cutting off the whole Saturday service. What kind of compromise is that?
Well, you know, I don't, I really don't want to get into a discussion like that, because we could have cut the whole service. We're not trying to do that. We're trying to make, do what makes sense. Please understand, this isn't easy for us to come out here and say that, but it would be a lot tougher to come out in two or three years from now and say, look, the minor changes we're making here, they're going to be major changes. We don't want to be in that position. You don't want to be in that position, we don't want to be in that position.
But if you don't look at the why it's happening, and which you said you don't...
We've discussed this already, I understand what you're saying. Put that down on your comment, and, I mean, we can talk all night about the why, the why, and I understand it. You've said that, we've recorded it, please record it on your sheet, and then we can, we can try to figure out the best way to move the trains and what we need to do.
I think the person in the back may have a new question that we haven't heard before.
With all the cuts you're making, it doesn't make this train a very appealing train to want to ride anymore. All of the train, inbound trains are local trains. How is that appealing to your commuters?
We specifically need your train number that you ride in the morning, and that's part of the comment. We've had that question before, sorry you weren't here, we have had some new people filter in through this discussion. We moved a train one oh-six earlier to cover a service gap to try to drive ridership, that train was extremely low. We moved it forward, and therefore, in order to accommodate the passengers that train used to make, we put it on, on Blue Island trains. We are going back, and we're looking first thing Monday, on if that makes a hundred percent sense, if we can start pushing the stops, maybe on different trains around the line, to see if we can accommodate that. So please, though, I need specifically what train you ride today, and, and any train you take.
The thing is, I'm not consistent with the exact same train every day of the week.
That's fine.
I mean, I ride all different trains, and I kind of expect my, it's more important for me to get into work on time and have an express train going in toward on time than coming home on time. And looking at your schedule, you had all local trains going inbound, and you weren't even given the option to switch to Hundred and Fifteenth to jump onto an express train.
That's exactly what this woman brought.
And you're making it very unappealing to even want to take the train.
And specifically...
And so I don't know how you're going to be able to build up ridership with all of the changes you're talking about there.
And that's the information that we're here to gather. Specifically, the trains that you take, even if it's three, four, five, six, I need to know those trains. Time you go to work, that helps as well. Before everybody got here, we were talking about the two trains in the morning, right, the ones that you can transfer over at Kensington to get in. Very, very low ridership, and for years, we've been hearing that that transfer is just not something that people want to do. They don't want to stand out in the cold, they don't want to stand out when it's hot, it's too dark, it doesn't feel safe. So what we do is, we combine the first two trains in the morning, try to get it down around six o'clock. Group conversations, not only here, but in other locations that we've done this week, we understand that the five fifty-seven arrival is just not going to work. So we're probably going to have to push it back a little bit in order for people to make that six o'clock start. Those are the comments that we're gathering, those are the ones that we can take back and look at the schedule that we're proposing, and see if we can make those changes.
I thought it was kind of odd to see some of those trains going homebound in the evening, and all the stops that were going to fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, all of those. And I'm seeing stops going there every two, three minutes, and within a five-minute period. Again, we've got to take the sixty-minute train ride, and we live approximately a half-hour outside of the city, because you're going to lose people this way.
And those, those are the comments we're taking back. I promised her I'd look at it Monday morning, probably fifteen, sixteen times I've promised her that I'm going to look at it.
I don't.
No? Lady in the back, you've had it a long time? Yep, that's you.
So as it stands right now, in, in comes September, there will be no service on Saturday? Is that what I'm understanding?
That's what the proposal is.
And the blue sheriff? And the blue shirt?
I would have to agree with a previous commenter that there would be a much better way to solve the, solve the low ridership issues in the Saturday trains. Many of the early trains, they have very many people on them going inbound, and it would be better to focus on the trains that have low, low ridership, and just cut those out and leave the higher ridership ones going in, than cut the entire service.
And that's, that's some of the feedback that we're getting. Please, the trains that you ride, comment them on them, so that we can take another look ahead this morning.
Lady all the way in the back corner.
Okay, I got a question, and I'm looking at your, when you're proposing the morning train, you're cutting out, the last train is gonna leave from the sub-line is at 8 o'clock, and the next one is not until 10, 10 o'clock on the sub-line? Now, what, what, what do you propose about the kids? You got kids who have summer jobs in the summertime that depend on that 9 o'clock train that's coming through there, to take them to 55th and around the rest of the way. So, I mean, we already have where we're not getting on a train versus the Rock Island every hour, and we have to wait in the evening going home. You got a 1 o'clock train, and then you got a 3 o'clock train. If, if you get off early, you, you gotta make sure that you leaving right before 1 o'clock or at 3 o'clock. Nothing can happen to you in between that time. I mean, it, it's, I mean, it's just a little frustrating, and I can understand if you're gonna do it every hour, but, I mean, two hours is a long time to wait, especially if you just miss a 1 o'clock train, you gotta sit there till 3 o'clock.
Yes, sir. I was surprised to hear the young lady say that you got to hybrid a firm in the passenger, market and promote. I'm also aware, by word of mouth, not firsthand, that you do safety promotions up north and go to schools, marketing safety, other, other capacities. I'm not aware of anything in the south side. Safety-wise, promoting, like the mayor said, a few other people, the mayor coming south or going north, what, no, south or north. If you're promoting the north, going to schools for safety, and never hit the south suburbs, promoting safety, and we've had issues at 127, that's a different rail, I understand, but just safety in general. You could've promoted using the rails more. Promoting, again, I think is a big issue here, if you just said that you hired somebody now, six months ago or whenever, a year ago, had those people have research and data bring to you guys, or to whatever information you already have, and worked together, that'd be more of a valid way of substantiating stuff. But, because that, that really irritates me to hear that you're promoting the north, but you don't come to the south side schools.
Amen. Let me, before...
I'm sure you have an answer, but let, let's just be realistic. And I'm just gonna be blunt, not politically correct. And I've only ridden that train once. But that goes through areas that are not too appealing, okay? So, let's address the reality of it. You have to promote, you have to educate, you have to do things first before you start saying, I wanna reduce. Like I said earlier, municipalities, everyone has to, under financial restrictions, we have, we have to work in a business sense, and work with a budget, and things are getting down when it comes to us from the state and everything else, we have restrictions. We have restrictions serving our constituents, we have restrictions serving your constituents. We all have to try to maintain service at the highest quality, at the best quality, rather than cutting. The easiest thing to do is to cut services. But then the taxpayers are gonna say, I'm paying for services. So, let's talk realistically. That line has never been promoted. There's a lot of things that haven't been promoted in the south side, and we're just starting to do it in the city of Blue Island. In the past three and a half years, this administration has done a lot of good things for Blue Island and the south suburbs. But like I said, I think I spoke to one of you guys, we had a call to have a, what do you call it, liaison, liaison person from Metro to come to look at our, our metro stations because they weren't being maintained. Again, this location in Blue Island has been here for 100 years, before Timley, before Beverly, before all these places. So yet, because, our, our historical site, I've been asking what's been going on with that historical site for years. Oh, we're gonna do some remodeling, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that. Then they, when they built the tower, they built that tower blocking it. How offensive was that to us, without even considering Blue Island when they did that? That goes back in the 60s or 50s. So there's some things that are not communicated easily, and was, should've been brought, if ridership, ridership was down. What have you guys done to promote the south side?
Can I, again?
Are you finished?
Are you finished? I didn't wanna interrupt you. Let, let me just say this, when you talk about we're doing safety programs on the north side, we're doing this on the north side, we're doing that, we're doing safety programs all over, on the south side, on the north side, on the west side, where we have our service area. We had our first ever televised safety, nationally televised safety then, at the high school in, in, I think it was Timley Park, a couple years, a couple years ago. Where? At the Timley Park High School.
Oh, Timley Park.
Okay, but it's a south side, is it? The south side just isn't Blue Island, please understand that. The, the south side is, is all the communities around the south side. I am a south side, okay? I was born in Blue Island, so I, so I understand, I understand that. So the bottom line of it is, we're not turning our nose or turning our, away from the south side. I told you about the investment we made. We made the investment to $585 million worth of new cars. We've got the best downtime performance, the more, most trains of any line, so to sit there and say, in all honesty, that we're not really paying attention to the south side, isn't, isn't really the, the correct statement. Now, can we work together and try to increase ridership? Can we do those things? Can we work collaboratively? The answer to that is yes, and we would like to do it. You talked about the, the tower that was built back in the 50s. Metro is only 33 years old, all right? We had nothing to do with the tower being built there, that was the Rock Island. My grandfather had 50 years on the Rock Island, my dad had 47, I've got, coming up on 44. I started on the Rock Island. So I'm tied into this community, believe it or not. So what we're, I'm saying here, I'm just not saying something and driving away, we're really trying to find out what's going on, but I don't wanna dismiss the investment that we've made. And, and you start looking at the north side, and you start looking at the west side, they've got cars that are, that are 64, 65 years old. We got cars that just came off of the, the rebuild line, the manufacturing line last year. So I mean, really, we've made significant investments, and I think that should also be done. Now, I understand what we're talking about is, is tough, it's, it's rough, and we are trying to work through some situations. All we're asking to do is, this is the proposal, tell us what it means to you and how it's gonna affect your life, and then we'll try to do whatever we can to make that as minimal as possible. That's all we're asking to do. And as far as the marketing, it wasn't marketing for Blue Island, it wasn't marketing for the north side. When we started talking with our board, working through our board, we said, you know what? Ridership is declining, we've got some situations going on here, what do we need to do? So we looked at doing a marketing campaign, it wasn't just about any certain area, it was how can we get more people out of their cars, and get them on the trains, so we can sustain our system. That's what that is doing. So we're trying to look at it and say, why are people driving? You gotta be, oh, I don't wanna say this, but it's much nicer on the train than it is sitting for an hour in traffic, every five seconds, the guy slamming on his brake. Would you agree that people ride the train? It's much nicer to do that, you can have a cup of coffee, you can read the paper. Why are so many people driving? You'll try to figure out how we can reach those people, whether they're in Blue Island, whether they're in Highland Park, whether they're in Joliet, Timley Park, I don't care where they're at, we need to get them to the train, that's what we need to do. Collaboratively, let's work together and try to figure that out.
And I agree with you on that. My issue is the marketing.
I think I misspoke, because I said that we just hired an agency a year ago, we've always had an advertising agency. Metro has always done advertising agency over the life of our, since we, for 30-some years. But last year, we hired a new advertising agency, and I think that's, that's what was lost in what I said, because I think the board, and again, Dan and our leadership, recognize that we need to be doing more. What we've been doing isn't enough. So they really wanted us to go in a new direction, a different direction, so we have a new agency that's really working with us. Their sole focus is increasing ridership, which is what we should do.
Does anyone have any new feedback, anything that we haven't already discussed?
Sorry, I'm sorry, I just came late. My name is Mary Jo, and actually, I was born and raised at Stewart Ridge all my life. So I've seen it from the IC, to the Highlander, to the whole nine yards. You asked about, does it upset my schedule? Definitely. I take the train daily, I take the night, evening trains home, I'm on it all the time because I don't drive downtown to park. Reason why I take it mainly is because it's for safety. It's for safety and sustainability. Those are the big things. But also, I'm a homeowner, and because in the West Pullman and in Stewart Ridge, and you're going through the 34th Ward, it's already been depleted, it's deprived, because West Pullman School is closed, and people are trying to build it up. And it's very difficult. If your train cuts these services, it's gonna decrease our property values in our homes, and nobody would wanna live there, because there's no way to get into the city unless you go walk up to 119th and take a Chicago bus, and go through the red line and everything else. And then you got safety issues. I agree about the marketing, which you've done, because over the years, it is interesting, I've had some ideas for you to promote. I always thought that there's ways that you can promote creating, like in Pullman, because I'm active in the Pullman area as well, but if you can create, having the bus stops right at the stations primarily, like Ashland, or even West Pullman, but Ashland, because you can then take, have them take those shuttle bus, or have it on the bus route, to go to the Crock Community Center.